We are going. Ever you are ready, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Bill, you're with us, right?
Can you hear us, Bill?
All right, Bill might not be with us.
Okay. Well, he's he's adjacent. He's almost here.
Here we go.
Connecting to audio. All right. Can you hear us now, Bill? Hello, Bill.
Bill, if you can hear us, sometimes it works if you just log off and then log back on again. We have two, so.
Well, maybe we can start and he'll catch up.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we recording?
We are.
Okay. Okay, I called the order of the meeting of the PCC Regulatory Review Committee. On July 25th at 3:02 PM. Members present are Ahko Wuch and Tomiko. We have minutes. From our last meeting, what was the date of?
So we do not have minutes. Yeah, we need to approve those next time because they were not.
Okay. And we have some revisions to zoning and some division regulations to talk about. So after reading those myself. It seems as though a lot of the places where the suggestion is that we should say this instead of that. We don't need to spend a lot of time with that. Every once in a while, there's there's a point where we need to discuss something.
Yeah.
So I think we can skip over the ones that are just. You should do this. If it should be an if instead of a but, just put the if in. And we we can go to the go to the ones where. Maybe we can share the screen and go to the ones where we actually need to discuss alternatives. That sounds.
Yeah, that makes complete sense to me.
Okay.
Do you want me to share? Do you guys want to share?
I'd be sure if that works for everyone. So let's just open with the subdivision regs with psyche comments. Oh. Something.
I think that first page is mostly blank.
This happens. Ah, there you go. Yes, it was. Yes, it was. Ah, I figured that was my. Okay. So, search. We'll just look for comments and go.
Yeah, look for comments.
Yeah, I think this, well, depending on. Who who feels who feels specifically about what, but I think this is probably the first one that requires any type of discussion. So. There's a couple of comments in this document and in I think in the wetland regs as well, which sort of. Speak to this idea of of looping in and providing a more formal. Role to people or agencies or groups perhaps than would normally be included in the subdivision review process. And and so this comment talks about referrals to staff and various boards and committees. And basically includes pretty much everybody. Director of Development and Town Engineer, Fire Marshal, obviously those folks are staff and they they would always. Be providing comment as part of an application, but but a subdivision. Of application is the same as a site plan. If it meets the criteria, then you approve it. And so there was some. Concerned that upon implementation, referring out a subdivision application to. Advisory committees to the town council, for example, or agriculture, design review. When the process is a yes or a no. Number one is probably not liked what much by the applicant. Number two would be a delay in the process. But number three. Could could ultimately result in discussions or conditions or modifications to a plan that. Aren't derived from the regs.
So Mike, the the re. We haven't. This committee, this commission probably hasn't done a big subdivision since maybe maybe you.
Never.
Right. So I was here back when when we were just doing so many subdivisions. And the reason why we have this is because. Part of our our subdivisions, we do open an open space dedication. And so part of so they they look at the open space. The agriculture looks at it if there's prime ag soils because generally if we would do an agricultural easement as opposed to. Just say a conservation easement or so that's why they they. Those folks have been on it. So. And for recreational amenities also, but how would you? How do you think we we should hand that handle that?
Um, so I just want to jot down what you just wrote. So you talked about open space committee. For open space dedication. And then ag. For agricultural easements versus just open spaces.
Right. And I think, you know, I think what we've always tried to do is, you know, theoretically, what we want. A developer to do is to come in with a blank slate. And have have the town and these advisory committees. Tell them what what features do they value, right? So. For example, I'm thinking Mountain View Estates. I'm not sure if you were there, but there. So. You know, there's a large wetland, you know, what are the areas that they'd like to see preserved? There was this one little corner spot. Which had a view of the Sterns Farm. So we had like a little one acre open space dedication. The rest of the open space dedication was in conservation easement, you know. It's providing like some community context for some of these to make them a better place.
Plus, it's only advisory.
Right.
They're not attaching conditions.
But just, yeah, and and I so the the challenge is if this is a just like a site plan application. How how do their advisory comments become part of the record that you review? Because there's no record. Because there's no public hearing. There's it's it's a does it meet the regs? Yes. Does it not meet the regs? No. So if they want to develop the area that that that.
They send a letter.
But there is, if there's no, we generally for a large subdivision, isn't public a public hearing sort of, you don't. You may, it's not a shall have a. You shall be subdivision, but it's a may. Generally, for a large subdivision, we we always have a public hearing.
Um, so, yeah, I think where I'm headed is we need to. Formalize.
Criteria.
Yeah, we need to. We need to try to formalize what you have done in operation so that it's more clear. So that it's not just, we're going to do these referrals to anybody and then we don't. Because again, if 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 one or multiple groups here gives you feedback that says, we really think you should preserve this area. Because it's, you know. Prime got a prime vista or whatever, unless there's a requirement within the subdivision regs, you can't. Modify or condition in the approval. Based upon those comments, because there's there's no, there's no mechanism for that evaluation. It's 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 just based upon. Their feedback. So we need to add them into part of the math equation somehow.
Yes. Yeah, because like clearly. Mansfield has never been comfortable with a site plan approval like and you saw that with. You know, with the the landing of the zone for. Seventeen fifty Stores Road. That was a site. They and. I'll tell you when it's a lot of work for the commission as well as staff. So I think. You know, in an ideal world, we'd want to go from a staff perspective. And I think I've heard this from the commission. We'd want to go to. Where we have such. A prescription. That if they are such a. We're telling them what we want. And if we get it, then it gets approved. And so it's like, did you meet this? Did you meet that? And I I think these are what I'm hearing is maybe there's a little, there's too much gray in it. And it's not really legally sound.
Right. Yeah, it's just. If. If the if they're just comments and you're going to say, thanks for reviewing it. We appreciate the comments and then go forward and review the. Subdivision application based upon the regs and say yes or no, then there's no point to the comments. So. But if there is a point to the comments, then that means that the commission wants to take those comments and rely upon them as they work through the review of the subdivision. Which which right now. There's no, there's no math for that. And and what this gets back to is if I'm an engineer and I'm sitting down to design a subdivision. I don't know what the Parks Advisory Committee and the Rec Advisory Committee to the and the Town Council might say about my project. So I have no idea how close my plans could be to an approval. And we want to create tangible criteria. To to align with what these things might be. So we're going to have to spend a little bit of time to think about how we might. Formalize that and make it more of a. Process sort of a, you know, input output rather than just. We're going to take these comments and we don't know what they'll say and we don't know what we'll do, but they're going to be there. So we'll we'll have to. Lean into that a little bit more and and see what we can come up with.
While we're thinking about it and so we don't have to spend forever there, we do have the open space acquisition criteria. In the plan of conservation and development. So maybe we tie it to that. For the open space and agriculture. The rest of the stuff. Like the town council, I don't know what they would say. The director, the director of planning and development and the town engineer would look at it for roads.
Maybe it's inappropriate to have the town council.
I'm not sure what they would. I mean, there's.
Now they take them off. This isn't their geography.
And yeah, and and you wouldn't want, you know, a neighbor who who was used to, you know, an undeveloped piece of property nearby. To see that the town council could provide comments and start creating, you know, sort of pushing that.
Could we have a should and then a shall? So you should seek feedback from prior to full design from. The various committees, including the design review panel. I think it's really the Parks Natural Resources Committee, Agriculture Committee and Design Review Panel and.
Um.
Yeah.
Those are the most important. Yeah.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is the ultimate goal to of this. Document to prepare a document that. Takes into account everything so that when the individual was done preparing his application. He knows that we must approve. Is that what the ultimate goal is of this?
Oh.
Now, um, so I. The the key here, the goal is to. To fix the portions of the document which are written with a level of uncertainty so that he doesn't know what the town's expectations are.
Understood. Okay, I understand. That's the goal of the meeting. The goal of the document, though. Is the goal of the document to essentially take the planning and zoning commissions. Ability to. To say no out of the equation.
No. No. Well, Mike, maybe you could give a little overview of this of the subdivision. You know what subdivision regulations are supposed to. They're supposed to be like a site plan. So it would be like if you meet the requirements. You you get your approval. Whereas a special permit application, which is what you all are used to dealing with. Is there's a lot more latitude that you can, you know, a lot more conditions. But what we're trying to do is make it so. These are so clear that if you follow the rules, you get the approval, right, Mike? Is that?
I I I came to that conclusion from everything that I was hearing. Do you think it's actually possible? To prepare a document that takes into account every issue? I mean, that seems that seems rather. Hard to do.
I would argue that it is a matter of burden of proof. Site plan and subdivision mean that the burden of proof to find something wrong with it falls on us. We have to be able to point to something and say, that's wrong. If we have internal guidelines that say, well, we want this and we want this in our regs. And if people don't do it, then that's wrong. We have to clearly enumerate them because unlike the special permit. Where we can just basically someone can put a billion dollars into a project and we can still say, no, we 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 don't like it at the end. We're not convinced. And towards upheld that we don't even have to really enumerate specifically what it is once we have the record.
Well, first.
Let me, let me. Okay, Mike, that was very helpful to me. I appreciate it. And I'm not being argumentative here. I'm trying to educate myself. So for example. If somebody puts a really large building on the corner of a of a road. And it kind of looks like a Marriott in Fort Lauderdale and we ask that it be dressed up a little better. Could could we totally not do it if they go through this type of of process?
Yes, but this is a completely different type of process. And I'm sorry, I see you're about to jump in there, Mike, and I'm I'm not. I you can take it if you want.
No worries.
But this is only, this is the subdivision of land. Um, is this process. This is breaking the land into different lots, right? It's a completely different. State of design, right? So so. You know, we would have to find a good reason why those type of lots don't work in order to say you lose that property, right?
I'm I am sorry. I I'm still learning, Mike. Thank you. You're helping me here.
I hope you're not construing my passion to be being upset with you because that's absolutely not what it is.
Well, I'm glad.
Here's the example of that potential park on the corner. You know, that could never be in the regulations and yet. That was an important thing when we talked about that viewpoint from that corner. And and the the person making the subdivision says, yeah, I don't have any problem. Well, yeah, you make a park there. But if. If we can't change anything at all, then we wouldn't be able to. Require that, right? It has to be voluntary if we didn't think of it in the regulations. So that kind of goes to Bill's point. How can you think of every possible thing that we might want?
I cut this out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that. As it gets back to sort of what this is, this is the. The development of or the 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 splitting up of land into smaller pieces of land. It doesn't actually authorize them to to use the property anyway. That would kick back over to the zoning reg. So to some degree. You know, if if, you know, there there's. Potentially a rub if they have land which 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 creates ten building lots. But two or three of those building lots would result in. The town losing, I don't know, access to a vista or something along those lines. It's the subdivision regulations say you can have ten lots and they present a plan that meets the criteria. You can't tell them, well, as it turns out, you get seven lots because we need to preserve this vista. So there's a. What what we're trying to do right here is try to create that. That overlapping point where we we go as far as the regs and statute allows for. What I'm. What I'm toying around with is something that. Speaks to the commission's. Authority to hold a public hearing. And leverages that as an incentive and basically says that an application containing for subdivision containing five or more lots, for example. That is not submitted with informal comments from the town council. Shall require a public hearing. Or some, you could incentivize those preliminary discussions. By saying that if if you've had those discussions before you submit your plan. And then we're comfortable that the plan has been made better by that process and we are not, you know. We're not worried about the public hearing process. Per se, whereas if you just show up and say, this is what we're going to do. Well, then, you know, if it's a larger subdivision, then then we're going to formalize the public hearing process. I. I got to think about it a little bit more, but I think I understand the intent.
Yeah. I think you're going down the right road there.
Um. If we want to go to the next one, just so we don't want to get stuck. The next one was for offsite neighborhood influences inventory plan. I. We struggled with this one because this basically says, tell us all the reasons why your subdivision. May create offsite impacts and and let's review for things like neighborhood characteristics, which are exactly what you can't get into.
Can't use. Characteristics, right?
That and you can't. You can't get into offsite. Issues offsite in through the subdivision process. So asking them to do this. Impact plan and review things beyond the scope of their project, you know. Unless you're saying, hey, we want to know if there's a traffic light across the street or that type of thing would be would be fine. But but this is really, you know, feels to me like. Asking them to do an inventory of everything in the area. To. Identify, you know, what what you might. Have specific concerns with, but the scope of your review is really solely tied to the land. That the subdivision is is being applied for under. It's not. It's not about.
Why are a townwide study? That's that's too much. Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
One of the points Mike was making is some. The ability to consider offsite impact is limited to zoning, right? That if I'm remembering my CASIO exam two, right? That you you can't consider offsite impacts unless you're in the zoning phase because subdivision has to be limited to the land.
Right, because all you're dealing with is if the land is 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 adequate to be cut up into smaller pieces, the land doesn't change. So whether or not there is some educational or cultural land use or something else down the street. Has no bearing on whether or not this ten acre parcel can be four lots.
Right, that should have. And our zoning. If it's owned for what they're asking for, then I think we'd take that off completely, the offsite inventory plan.
Well. I would say that we've wanted that we'd want to have them demonstrate. That they're somehow they're they're. Consistent with the context. You know, of the neighborhood, right? Or.
Can they do a townwide study?
No, no, absolutely not.
And regional?
Yeah, that's like a.
That's a stretch. International. Consequences of this subdivision.
So.
We got to narrow that down. Yeah.
And I think I I think what it gets back to is. Alls they're trying to do is cut the lot up into smaller lots. And so the question for me would be. What could they possibly, what what might they show up with through whatever their, whatever this section looks like in the future? That would cause the commission to then say, well, because of that, we don't think. That this is appropriate. But within the confines of the subdivision regs, because we're not dealing with single family versus two family versus multifamily. And this is not going to be dealing with engineering based stuff because if there was a sightline issue or a traffic problem or or a. Topography with with how the public improvements are being created, that would be something that the engine town engineer would be able to address. And. That's a much more tangible thing. This really speaks to things that aren't tangible. But I, you know, we can. Because it's it's purely going to affect basically the layout of the lots, I would I would guess. I don't know what else or an area to to remain. In conservation or whatever. I'm not, I'm not sure what. Where you might go with some of this.
So. Which so this this was done with last time the the subdivision regulations were updated. You had your chair was a landscape architect. So this is this. This is where, and I do, having worked with a lot of landscape architects, especially the ones. The kind of academic ones at UConn, I really like how they present the plan because they are looking at this from a landscape level. So can we get something there to kind of show that they're. They're the way they're orienting these lots, dividing these lots. Is within some sort of neighborhood context or landscape con landscape level context.
Well, and it's pretty wishy washy because they're encouraged to submit, right?
No, well, after over four. Let's see.
Oh, if you're over four, it's mandatory.
Yeah.
All right, let me, yeah, well, let's see what we can. See what we can do with this. And to try to.
Yeah.
And take. Tone it down. Yeah. The second comment. Talks again about making the process more, I don't, I don't want to use the word transparent because it's not a lack of transparency. But it's just about making the the. Criteria. More defining the criteria better or or just defining it. And so this again speaks to us as part of that same thing. Because both they both fall into this offsite and neighborhood influences inventory plan and site analysis plan. So it's. Under that same heading again of of looking at. Some of these other issues and and. I mean, I I've seen, generally speaking, with a subdivision, you get an existing conditions plan, you know, here's the way that the land is now. Here's topography. Here's. Here's existing route rock outcropping. Here's large trees. Here's a stream. Whatever. And then you get the proposed. So. You know, I think that. This sort of separate analysis is is I'm not, again, I'm not sure. How much better it's it's. The the application might be based upon that. But I think this is, you know, a lot of the. A lot of this stuff can can be included sort in the comments below for the site design. Some of this stuff is very basic, but there's other things like if you look at. I think it's on the second section list. Nineteen particular microclimate conditions that may affect development. Directions of prevailing winter winds and summer breezes.
Oh, my Lord.
Um.
No, 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 that's way overkill.
That's a lot.
You get to use azimuth in here. That's not a common word to to break out.
Yeah.
I. Yeah, and and.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it's.
The most. If I'm ready, may he rest in peace.
I I. This is, this is unique.
Spirit of what 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 the planning and zoning commission is trying to do. Here is very noble. It's just, it's just the how we try to make them do it. I think the the goal here. Was to. Like, for example, I'm thinking about the pond. The property on on Separatist Road and North Eagle Road. That used to be an old strawberry field, right? It's got a pond. So you want to sort of understand that context and then maybe try to highlight some of those things as you're subdividing and then, you know, the future development. But. This is a lot.
Yeah.
So I I thread this needle. But some of it can go.
Yeah, and then. The the comment that we have in there, it's sort of aligns with what was above. It's just sort of trying to hit on that issue of. The the comment that we have in there, it's sort of aligns with what was above, it's just sort of trying to hit on that issue of. Rather than having something in this, does the directors encourage? Subject to privacy considerations to notify the following agencies or people, I mean, number one, I think it's a little bit. Unique to have sort of a qualifying statement about privacy considerations related to. The the. Staff making notifications to others about an application. So. Uh, we we this'll, this is sort of all part of that that same theme that we've been talking about, and I think we we've kind of. Litigated uh, as far as trying to dial that back. The next comment is about the conceptual yield plan and conceptual layout plan, so again. The um. They come in, they provide you the plan based upon the design criteria in the regs, if it meets the criteria, you prove. So requiring this conceptual yield plan and these conceptual layouts. I mean, you're number one, asking them to engineer the project twice. Um, and. There's. It it I'm not, I mean, again, I can, I can certainly rationalize why that might be required. Or the commission may want it. But it I. I frankly never seen it before, and I think that the the focus should be on them providing. The commission with a plan that meets the regs and and not look at how much.
It's. There um. There there's an example of that in the subdivisions in the regulations.
identifies all streets, lots, open space that could be developed pursuant to all applicable zoning and subdivision criteria, including sub cluster development. Provisions authorize the commission to preserve new to require any subdivision to be clustered with these lot sizes on larger areas of open space. Includes provisions to reduce your wave lot frontage and setback requirements. So it's it's the conceptual layout of the street. Or series of streets as would be presented to. Zoning later.
So basically.
The same as what they're doing anyway.
So. What the the. What was happening was that um, this came from interior forest corridors, they they didn't. They wanted to preserve more. Open space, so if you, so basically if. You had to come in and say, you know, say you have a rectangular piece of property and you can get five five lots on it. What they wanted to do is have you i- is kind of incentivized like this shared driveway. And then so you could preserve more open space, so. That's just the general, uh, that's my recollection.
So so the idea is that you have the plan that you wanna do and then the conceptual plan, so you do both of them. Show us.
Right, and so. I think we talked about in if when we, if you go to um, appendix D of the of the plan of conservation development. We talked about. The kinds of things we wanna have, like just just making that um. But I don't know how you do that through subdivision, Mike. So it's it's the natural resources uh, protection zoning. And so I, we never.
I mean, we could require that, right?
Yeah, if that's what you want, you'd basically have to make it the requirement.
It it's interesting because it. Clearly, the subdivision regs as written have this very. Um, strong intent. To promote certain types of development. But it seems. To me, coming in from the outside and and you with no understanding of like the context of it, that a lot of these things. Are what would normally be done at the zoning phase, but it's trying to. Before we even split land, try to make people think about. How the project's gonna work at the zoning phase and like avoid the issue of somebody splits their land and then comes in for zoning. And then we fight with them for five years because we want them to do certain things, so they don't wanna do that and it becomes. A mess.
Would you be able to pull up page four fifty-two of the P O C D? And then it, this this can open a huge can of worms and I I know we do not. Want to do that, but um, and I think this was sort of. So I think some of this is gonna be covered in um, our zoning regulations. Like as we do small lot, single family.
Also, hello, Luann. Hello, Luann, you're coming just in time to talk about conceptual designs.
Great, hi, everybody, sorry I'm late, I apologize for that.
Page four, page four fifty.
Yes, I just came from a meeting with some state officials, one of whom said, I don't think plans of conservation and development are all that useful.
So we're going right to the plan of conservation.
Maybe what he meant is or he or she is that many of the plans that they've read weren't that useful.
Nope. But but that's okay, I stumped for for its usefulness as a as a policy document, so.
In the text. It's highly true.
Oh, yes.
I so just. I think what we're trying to get is this. This Randall Rent, World by Design. He he helped us, I think, develop some of these these subdivision regulations, this is like, I'm going way back from. Uh, and I think we were trying to do. We were trying to get subdivisions instead of the one on the page, so you're so you're looking at. On the very top, you're looking at what you have. Um, and the the middle drawing is a conventional subdivision. And then I think the third one is a more con- a natural resources protection zoning, so if you keep going, Michael. Um, there's a whole like description about that. And then there's examples of what we wanna see, now if you're letting someone just divide their land. It like you're not gonna get that, you know?
I mean, if we want that, we should require it, right, rather than just have it. An idea that would be nice.
Right, so then how do we, if if that's what you want, I guess. How then how do we get there, Michael Demato?
Well, yeah, well, if you try to get all the way to there. It seems to me that you'd have an awfully thick document. If you want something in which. Uh, you have every issue uh, controlled. Um, I uh, I've I finally am. I'm starting to understand what what we're doing here, but um. Uh, we we are only dividing up the land, right? If they wanna divide up the land and tell them what type of buildings they could put on it and so forth, I think we're. Gonna have to put an awful lot in this into this document.
But if you divide, but I think Bill, what I've heard from our town over the years is that. If you go up, if you go up Michael's. If you go to. If, yeah, I think we wanna see. What I've heard folks wanna see is more of the the third. Drawing, and if you let them divide it up, what you're gonna get is that middle drawing. Or rendering, so I think, yeah. So, I mean, we can't talk about a lot of this stuff, but we've. The way land is divided. Is has a lot of repercussions, you know, you're you're living with that. Forever.
So 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 we have these ideas, but we don't require. That was must have been a compromise, right, at the time the regulations were.
I don't know, I'm gonna I'm gonna turn it over to Mike. A lot of thinking about this.
I I mean, I think that. There's a lot of towns that have developed these types of regulations and and generally speaking, what they try to do. Is incentivize. The 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 design shown at the bottom of the screen. By by allowing flexibility. Or reducing or increasing the the total densities allowed or or or. Providing savings to the developer in different ways so that this makes more sense. Functionally. It seems across the board, this is what a lot of people want. There are a lot of towns that have these regs on the books, but they're not often used. Um, and and. That may simply be because people are not as interested in living in the bottom photo as they are living in the middle photo. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but. If the. If people will live in the houses shown in that that lower rendering, then developers would build it. But if people would prefer to live in the one in the middle. Then they won't. I think that the good news is. Mansfield is not under a tremendous the amount of pressure from a residential subdivision standpoint, you're not seeing dozens of these per year.
But but isn't there also another issue as well, it's not just where people want to live and which one of those they prefer. It's how much of the economic incentive for the developer is on one of those two models. So if the economic incentive is on that second middle model, then that's what they're gonna do. Regardless of, because in a town like Mansfield where there's a lot of pressure for housing, people will buy it, even if it's not. Ideal for them, if that makes sense. There there, it's a buyer's market here, so you could, you know, either of these would be.
Today, it is.
Would today, right, but and what we're really thinking about here isn't so much what people. Are willing to buy, it's what makes the most sense for the land use for the town in the long term. Which I think we're agreeing is that bottom one, right, because you you're you're making a more efficient use of the land. You're preserving tree canopy, you have these. Um, externality um, benefits of uh, intact forests, you know, all these other things, right, so. So I think that's the thing we have to be careful about is is. Saying it's the people who are driving the the decisions, it may it may or may not be. The buyers driving the decision, the mayor may not be, it could be, you know, the developers should drive driving the decision.
Well, and that bottom picture is not efficient if it has sewer and water and we wanna preserve eighty percent of it in forests, that's probably not a good idea.
Well. Right. Well, you you're saying more density.
I mean, that.
Oh, I see.
Thing for every single spot in town.
Right, but you're not, you you can't zone for the absolute most efficient use for every piece of land in town.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah, you we only have sewer and water in a very. Very few places, so I think really what we're talking about is more. In our R A R and in our R nineties, which may be something, maybe R A R. Something else.
And when I asked Rudy, why the ninety, he said, he pointed to that picture on the bottom, that's what he was envisioning.
Yeah.
You know, guys, I hate to open my mouth because I show my ignorance. But guys, for an old man, can you blow up that bottom picture so I can see what the heck you're talking about?
Uh, and maybe showing him the.
So.
It's just smaller lots. Right?
So a tradition of land would see a forested area with a single house. Broken up into what looks to be five different houses with five different, four or five different lawn areas, right? You wind up in essentially hedgerows, shite stands of trees. Leading to fourth fragmentation um, for four units of housing, whereas cluster development. Takes those four units of housing. And consolidates them, creates a common green space garden area here to provide common amenity. They're each individual houses, but by incentivizing cluster development by allowing things like shared driveways. And um, smaller lot sizes, the idea is that you still have the same number of units of housing. Uh, on the same piece of land, and yet the actual amount of preserved area stays, reducing forest fragmentation.
Got it, thank you very much.
I I think the other piece to this, which is which is a sort of a key. Point is that. These, like what you've shown here, and you use the word correctly, amenities and common green space and shared driveways, all of those things require. The developer to think through sort of the legal process of how to do that, either through an association or or easements. People don't always play well together in the sandbox. And it makes makes constructing these houses and the finances behind it more complicated. I'm sitting right now in the town of Bolton and um, there was a a small private development of a few lots that was accessed on a. Private shared driveway with a small um, bridge crossing, for lack of a better term, bridge failed and it. Went out because they weren't replacing it. We can all get, we can all correctly answer with one guess, who was on the hook for providing that access because they were the ones responsible for providing. Firefighting services, should there be a a problem there, so.
Right.
There's some nuances that operationally, I think, make it more complicated and developers are just, I'm not interested in the details. I know I got, you know, four corners of the lot, I stick a house in the middle, I put a driveway in and I'm on to the next one. So again, it's. There's there's a, there's a, there's a level of incentive, I think, that we would have to sort of bake into this.
Although, Mike, um. Because of the terrain in Mansfield, like. The land that's that's developed, that we have available for development is rocky, steep slopes, and so. Uh, getting a road in there, like, for example, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Simpson Wood, the 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 property that we just preserved on eighty-nine. There was a um, a subdivision um, layout for that. To put a road in. Would have been so expensive, so they could have done something like that, a shared driveway is much cheaper than a road. And we've heard from developers that if I have to build a road anywhere, I'm not developing, it's just way too expensive. So in Mansfield. That common driveway. Has been used quite a bit. Um. I've always said I would never live on a common driveway, I think it's um. I. Think there's a lot that, doing what I do, I think there's just a lot of issues that could come up. And I do think in the end the town is gonna be liable for that. Um, also, what I've heard from our pet parks and natural resources committee is that. It allows for the development of rear lots where sometimes. It wouldn't be um, feasible by putting a conventional road, so. So there's a, so I think that's good, I think we could, you you know, if common driveways. We have a lot of common driveways that you all have approved over the the years, we haven't been bitten yet. Um, not to say that we won't be, but so so just, that's just a little context, I think I had, I need to. Just for my work over the years with the Parks and Natural Resources Committee.
I'm sorry, when you make something with a common driveway, how do you maintain it, do you? Like a homeowners association maintains it or?
That that no, they have to make it, maintain it, and they have a legal and part of, I believe, part of the subdivision. Regulation somewhere, it says you have to file a maintenance agreement.
And it it becomes an issue because of exactly that question. And Mike's comment before of people don't play well on the sandbox with each other, is it's just waiting to open the door for a whole civil mess. Which the town shouldn't be involved in because it's a civil matter, but it will invariably. Wind up on our doorstep at some point because of, for example, a bridge going out and needing to provide.
And then we'll end up taking over the road and making it, you know, improving it to meet our road standards and on and on we go. It's expensive, so.
I think, yeah, I think that that at the end of the day, it's probably, it's all of these things, but. Developers are just interested in getting in and getting out and anything that adds another step, unless there's a clear connection between that extra step and money. More money, not not costs, I don't, they're just not gonna be interested, so we we've just gotta figure out how to. Make it clear that this is the preference and then find a way to understand exactly what the 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 cons are on that list and. Creating some type of an incentive so that it makes sense.
So how do we? Do that, do we need to set up a meeting between Taipei and say local developers? And the planning department and this subcommittee in order to engage in an actual conversation of what are your costs, how do we bring them down? How do you get your profit margins, you know, I don't know who's willing to reveal that information, but. That sounds like we're we're going around a little bit on, this is what we want, this is what we think is healthy from a planning perspective. But we don't build, you are the private developer, how do we convince you to build that, right, do we do, how do we do that?
Uh, I think that the first step would be. To try and identify. Um, a. An example or two of what we would say are. Viable. Cluster subdivision regulations, so. We can put those in front of you and say this is sort of how we might start to get there, um, but. We don't wanna, I mean, cluster subdivision regulations or open space conservation stuff, whatever the term is, I mean, that that could be a two-year project in and of itself. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna derail the zoning regs um, with with dealing with this, but obviously this is. Part and parcel of the small lot. Single-family regs that that are sort of slated there, so. I think that a, a, an outfit like a small local engineering firm. You know, would be able to provide some context as to whether or not changes being contemplated made sense. Or if there were were design issues related from a, from a cost perspective, that's hard because things are so, you know, they fluctuate. But I think as a first or a next step, we can probably find an example or two of where this might be done. Where this has been done well and see if that. Excites anybody.
Let's go back to the regulation we were talking about, so Luan can see how this got started.
So we were over here. This is the existing regulation which calls for that conceptual layout plan to be submitted. So basically requesting that when someone comes in with a subdivision. Uh, showing where streets and potential houses and open spaces are going to be. Submitted alongside the actual lines of subdivision. And that's mandatory, I think it's mandatory if there's more than four houses. Yes.
So so they may end up doing two different plans, one their plan and one the conceptual plan.
Okay.
And so we're not requiring them to do the conceptual plan, but we're like forcing them to look at it. Is that the idea? Forcing them to think about it.
From.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's like, it's like these regs are sort of like the Goldilocks syndrome, right? You wanna see all three and then you'll decide which ones you like. And maybe it costs more, maybe it takes more time. Um, but, yeah, I think that, especially given everything else that we have going on. Let, let us see if we can pull some examples to decide what we think and see if that. Charts a course as far as how this might work. We might be able to pull some, um. You know, we might be able to then, you know, we work with enough towns in the area that if, if we find an example set of regs that we think is good. We could probably then get a copy of a subdivision plan that came in under those regs. And kind of see how that works, right? Here's the upfront regs and we like those. Here's the type of subdivision that it generated. And maybe that'll get us, you know, frame the conversation a little bit better.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So, okay, though, I will add that to our list of homework items. Um, and I'm gonna push us forward, the next one will be onto page twenty one. You get to go five, no, more than that, eight whole pages. Um, so this is again speaks to a lot of what we've been talking about. It says optional documentation and then says the commission may require the following additional documentation. Um, and has things, um, you know, that, again, environmental impact studies, including hydrologic analysis. Um, uh, evaluating the impact of the subdivision on land, air, and water and neighboring sites. Um, considering a bunch of things, air quality, fluorofon, noise levels. Again, I'm not sure how you evaluate noise levels if you're developing, subdividing a piece of property. In accordance with the regulations that the town has adopted. So.
And future development of land dividing the proposed subdivision?
Right, yeah, there's some language in there about designing for existing or potential impacts. I'm not sure how you design for the future impacts, um, but.
Potential impact and potential design.
Right.
Too far.
Yeah. Um.
It's, it's sounds a little bit like you're, we're asking developers to read our minds here, which is a problem.
Or or pad the record with things that may ultimately support what what the commission may find to be appropriate to deny.
Um, yeah, yeah, yep.
And that's, again, that the, that is the opposite of what the subdivision process is supposed to really be.
Yes.
Um.
I don't think any other town would imitate our subdivision regulation.
No.
They would if they're.
So, okay, I'm glad that one, pretty good consensus on that one. Um, so again, it's not to say these things, none of these are important, none of these should ever be included, you can't look at any of these things. It's, it's all about designing the criteria and including them very clearly. So if you have concerns about something specific, you know exactly what those concerns are and how they would. They would address that concern through an engineering analysis or design or whatever, so same, same basic comment there. Um, I think, let's scroll, can we, can we go on to the next one?
You can.
Awesome. Um, the next one would be six point one three, and it says failure to obtain necessary approvals shall be considered a violation of these regulations. And 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 pursue in accordance with municipal and state enforcement provisions. So if they get subdivision approval, then that's what they need. Um, their failure to obtain another agency's approval does not then constitute. A violation which, which the the town staff are gonna, you know, start, start dealing with enforcement action.
Um, it seems very circular.
Yeah, it certainly could hold up the issuance of permit because you need health or you need building or whatever, but it doesn't then create a violation of the subdivision. Okay, cool. Um. Next one is where? Yeah, this one was pretty standard.
As I, that was the door word you had coming.
One of the next pages also just complying with the statute.
Yep. Um. The next one is seven point four. And it says the planning and zoning commission shall have the right to limit lot sizes to this minimum or the minimum size necessary to address all health and safety requirements. So again, lot size is a function of the zoning regs. If it's forty thousand, it's forty thousand. Um, you wouldn't then sort of change some of those things with, in a non-defined way. To something else, particularly if it was based upon some other criteria from some other. Health or safety, that would all come from those agencies. If they couldn't meet the health codes with forty thousand square feet, then they would have to increase it, but you don't get to then take that on and make that part of your review. Um, okay. Next one, I think, is part of that health requirement, the commission may require large lots of larger size if needed to conform to state or local health requirements. Um, based upon the hydrologic analysis area and other reliable data, the larger lots will help prevent detrimental impacts. So again, the zoning regulations say how large the lots need to be. Um, you, you, you can't pull in some of these other things and and then say, oh, by the way, we're experts in interpreting these analyses. And therefore, we're gonna tell you that you need something larger. Um, if it's a health requirement, it's gonna be the Connecticut Public Health Code that will trump anything you're gonna do anyways.
Yeah.
Uh, we are in agreement there?
Yeah.
Cool. Flying, um, all right, seven point five, building setback lines and lot fringes. Um. We flagged this in the zoning reg review, you can't waive or reduce standards. Um, because this come out of the zoning regulations. So you can't put it in here and then waive it. While you can waive certain things within subdivision regulations, what you can't do in zoning. You can't take something that comes out of the zoning regs, put it in, in, it's like, I'm like a, an end run around a variance.
So, so what, if we want, if we want to be more flexible, we just have to make the setbacks more pushy, right?
Hmm.
Right, but that would be within the, yeah, within the zoning regs unless you could come up with some flexible design. That, you know, would would remove them, but again, it's all gonna come out of the regs, it's not gonna be in subdivision stuff.
Right, it's too late at this point.
Yeah. Um. So again, um, reducing or waiving lot frontage requirements, these are zoning standards. Um, so we don't wanna be using the subdivision regs to waive. Or reduce or modify uh things that are required by the zoning regs unless we've, we rethink the whole. Structure of how the zoning regs are set up. Um. Yes, no?
Say, you know, it should be fifty feet unless there's some overwhelming reason why it shouldn't be. Do we have some language like that?
In terms of set setbacks or?
No, I mean, it's either, like, I can see in specific zones, you could have a provision that would be written, which say, you know.
Up to or a.
You know, the setback is this, um, you know, special regulations for the zone. As bad regulation as that, you could maybe, but it seems weird. Otherwise, it's a variance, that's what a variance.
And and then you get into, what if there, I mean, you're, at what point does these, do these waivers start consti- constitute rear lots? And how the heck do you know what's conforming and isn't conforming moving forward? For for, and how do you apply the zoning regs? You know, you'd have to just have this caveat that basically, you know. I don't even know, it seems really messy. Um.
Well, I, this comes from like our, yeah, we definitely need to get rid of this, but then I, I think I'm getting confused here. Because with a subdivision in the R A R ninety zone, oftentimes the lots are not. Two acres because we have the open space, so how do? Deal with that?
Um, I.
So we have the, right now, we deal with it with the the building area envelope and the development area envelope.
Mm-hmm.
So like, we have a lot of lots in new newer subdivisions without that two hundred foot feet of frontage. Cause it's a cluster subdivision.
Yeah, uh, what I'm thinking, and I, I, I always hesitate and like spitballing in the middle of the meeting. Cause I don't wanna say this is gonna work and then find out it won't, but I'm wondering if. We could then, we we could just include a floor and a ceiling. So it can be waived or reduced. Between these numbers or something, so if there's certain standards or if there's a, if there's something that comes up. You know, you can provide some flexibility, but within this, this window. Um, so that it's not just a blanket, we can waive it, we can reduce it to. You know, an unknown number. I I'd have to think about it a little bit more, I understand what you're saying. But I, um, I'm just wondering if we say under these circumstances or if this situation presents itself. Or if the type of development is X and Y, you know, to facilitate this. We can authorize a reduction in the required frontage by X.
Yeah, like you have to be very clear, if then it's up to this, like, that's what Mackenzie's saying, it there cannot.
Right.
Very clear, no, no discretion, so, cause there are lots with no frontage on a share, like a shared driveway, you don't have frontage.
But can we say, uh, more than forty, less than sixty, is that allowed?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm wondering, if we create the criteria, like, for example, it's it's approved as part of a shared driveway situation. Or it's whatever, if we create the criteria, but we're, but we're very transparent in what those criteria or those situations are. And the limits that the commission would authorize a waiver to, not just will go from two hundred to fifty. Um, then I think it's, again, it gets back to, everybody reading this document understands exactly what the criteria are. And what the reduction could be to, and it's, this is not effectively a variance, which is what it is now, we can waive it. Um.
So you have to think of every possible criteria.
No, you think of all the ones you can think of off the top of your head, and then the next time that you run into one that sounds really reasonable, you modify the regs.
Okay, that makes sense, yes.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how they make it sure that airplanes don't crash, they just fix the. Crash.
Thank God, we're not building airplanes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think it's just a matter of if, if there's, if nothing else. Increasing the predictability of the of the criteria. So maybe we aren't gonna get every single one here now, today. Um, but we're at least gonna improve upon the the readability of the document and making sure that people understand what you expect. Um, we're gonna help them to read your minds, as as we've said, a little bit better. Um.
That makes sense.
Let's, uh, is that the last of it?
Iron?
Oh, yeah, here we go, yep. So again, this, this speaks back to the referrals previously and and the the public hearing and when to include comments. Um, which I think we've, we've sort of covered. Um. The next one is section thirteen point eight, um, which, which. Uh, points out that you can require an applicant to make improvements to public facilities. Um, then if they need to improve the things within the public infrastructure realm to satisfy. Whatever traffic or or other issues, that's fine, but, um. You can't sort of take those improvements and and apply them to some other place. That's a pretty minor one.
It's not connected to the subdivision.
Right.
Okay.
So, but they can, we can require them to make a trail on this open space. That was dedicated as a result of the subdivision.
If it's part of the 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 total original parcel, yes. Um.
We require a sidewalk going off the side of a.
You didn't, oh, that was the many, that, you didn't require it, they offered it up.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, all right, so the next one is fourteen one. And that says, it talks about bonding, it says these subdivision improvements shall be completed and or bonded prior to the filing of the subdivision. Which they can't do, they can't bond the project before they file the plans. Um, so. That is.
Hmm.
And so the other, what we, what we cited as a second section is the statute. So the statute says that bonding is tied to certificate, certificate of occupancy. So if they say, I'm gonna do the work, you don't want, they're not gonna bond it, they're gonna do it. So they can't do the work before they file the plans. So, yeah, you create this situation where they actually, like, they can't get started. So that needs to be, um, obviously aligned with statute. Then I missed something there, I lost my audio.
No, you're good.
Okay. Um. So. Fourteen four, extension of completion date, as a condition of such extension, the commission may require an increase in the amount of the bond. You can't increase the bond simply because they've asked for an extension. If, if it's been five years and, and there's a, a change in the cost. That's, that's a function of providing adequate surety, but simply because they ask for an extension, you can't. Just beef up the bond. Um. Um. The next one is fourteen seven. Um. This, just asking to clarify that the, the maintenance agreements pertain only to public improvements. So it's not for everything, it's not ten percent of, so just, that's a, that's a statutory thing, which is cited there. So this would just be to align with what you can hold those maintenance agreements for. And that's it.
Okay.
That's one.
That's one, we've got one more to go.
Feel like I need to go hydrate or something. Um. All right, let's go to the next one.
Hopefully, these are more straightforward.
Hopefully.
Yes, it is.
All right. So, um, the first one is on page seven, we flagged the, the term for the yield plan. Because we've had a lot of discussion about the subdivision regs, so it's really, we need to make sure that these things align. Um, and then there's some up, uh, we're gonna have to obviously update references to the, to the new sections. Um. The. This piece here at the bottom, let me zoom in here. Again, talks about the inland wetlands commission reviewing the yield plan, which again. Um. Aside from the whole yield plan thing, the whole purpose of the inland wetlands commission is to review the things that, that fall within their authority. You can't delegate, right, so the subdivision regs say we can make these referrals. Because the subdivision regs say they can, you wouldn't then wanna refer something to the inland wetlands commission. Um, unless there's a specific trigger within the statute or within the zoning regs, so that's really what this speaks to. Um, there's no. Um, there's no advisator advisory reviews or anything along those lines, particularly when it's the same agency or the same group of people. Okay. The one thing, this is really just a note in three point one, if we if we move to the next one, I, and this is probably just me. Um, I can't find the official wetlands map on the town website.
It's on the GIS.
Yeah, so the GIS was, is there, but you know, like a lot of times people will present map amendments and other things, and so if you chip away at that. There's reference throughout the document to the official wetlands map, and so there should be something somewhere that either says the. The official wetlands map is the GIS, or here's a static PDF.
Other people, cause when I go there, it says, uh, not allowed.
We we can, we can definitely.
You're, you're probably using an old bookmark, which is when it was Main Street, and it's now CIA. Yeah, so just Google Mansfield GIS and you'll get the new hyperlink.
I can, I can, or you go on the planning homepage, um. We have, oh, Mike, Michael, there's someone who made a chat.
So, um, the other reason for us wanting to look at this is that. We, all of the official wetlands maps should say that. Have a disclaimer that it's not for development purposes, that just because the state DEP layers and whatever have. Wetlands here or not here does not mean that's what we would use to then. Base our development, um, and that that you would always look defer to um, an official delineation. Sort of ran into that conundrum recently in another town, and we didn't have that disclaimer, and so there was a lot of uncertainty about. Uh, what to rely upon and and what level of information is required, so we just PDFed the layer, called it an official map and we're on our way. Number nine, or or sorry, page nine, this is purely for consideration. I've done this in a couple of other towns, we don't need to sort of come up with a thought today, but in a number of other places, we have included this as something that. These these types of improvements that don't need wetland permits, if you're doing a generator or propane tank or an AC condenser. In the upland review that meets these criteria, you don't have to get a permit for it. So in some towns, it tends to be a big problem, if you've got a lot of developments that are within the upland review, in other places it's not, but it just threw it in as food for thought.
Conceptually, this is something, it's it's, so I, before I was here, I worked in um, the town of Winchester, which is a huge residential lake. Way overbuilt, I was giving out multiples of these permit every week for, ah, yes, somebody wants to run a trench line for electrical. A hundred feet from a wetlands and is gonna put in a condenser pad, that's permit. And so we're collecting all of these permit fees, and it, to me, it felt like extortion of the people for these tiny little projects. Um, so I I personally, just on a, on a standpoint of it may not come up as much in Mansfield, but I think it's very reasonable.
It it's, you know, we.
Close to the wetland, is there a, like, even if it's right. Like zero feet, you know, one foot from the wetland, you're not, we're not gonna require a permit?
So I think, so where this started, the first place I did it was in a coastal community, and they ran into situations where they had all kinds of wetlands and all kinds of issues. But they needed, people needed generators to run their some pumps, and they would come in and we'd say, you need a permit, and they'd say. What do you mean, I, we're in the upland or whatever it is, and um. They're like, but but the house is there, I, it's a generator, I have to put it next to the house, there's no other place, you know, I've got a. It's it's a accessory to that, and so, um. I understand what you're saying as far as if it's if it's in a wetland, um, though I guess it would mean that the. The house would have to be within a couple of feet of the wetland, cause these things are are, um, affixed next to it.
I don't know, can, can we put some qualifier there? I I don't see this as being a huge issue, um.
And and if it is not, then it is, uh, I mean, we don't need to include it, I just wanted to throw it in there because it's come up in a couple of other places.
You can put a fifteen square foot generator.
Yeah, okay, uh.
So one of the things that we've done, um, in another town was. Uh, include, um, a specific distance from the house, so if it's located within. If the unit is located within eight feet of the home, or seven feet or ten.
So, so that sounds reasonable to me, like if it's a, if it's part of the curtilage of the house, but. That seems perfectly reasonable, but I I understand Jennifer's issue about wanting to make sure we have some kind of a. Check on, because I can't think of a couple of houses, I'm thinking of that one, was that a woodland, that was right, that was a. A new, new building on an old foundation that was right, literally almost in the lake. There, I mean, that would be a one where you'd wanna have some say over where they're putting their pad.
Yeah, like Echo Lake, I'm thinking around there, I like, um. Yeah, I think maybe just a few little guardrails, maybe like greater than ten feet from the wetland. And no closer to the wetland than the, and or no closer to the wetland than the existing structure or something like that.
So that would allow you, if it was five feet, then you could.
No, twenty, I would say twenty-five feet.
No, but if, no closer than the house, so if the house were five feet away.
Or you can just say would slowly within the upland review area. And so it would not, you you, if it was within a wetland, then it would need to go to the, for a permit.
Okay.
That'll save you a lot of work.
Yeah, I I need to think a little bit more about that and to discuss with Michael, but I, cause I'm sort of thinking, there should be a some distance from the wetland.
We don't want people pouring concrete immediately next to the.
Yeah, I don't want a zero feet next to the wetland, like an echo and a property on Echo Lake.
But also that, you know, they might, i- i- if it's a generator, a propane tank, or an AC unit. They're not gonna want it to be there either, because functionally, those things, you know, you wouldn't wanna put those in those types of prone areas, right? So they're, you know, you obviously know way better than me, and and yeah, certainly, we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve this today, but. Um, yeah, I think it's probably from a, from an operational perspective, they probably wouldn't want it there either, they probably would agree. But, yeah, so food for thought.
No, the the spirit of what you're saying is good, like, we don't want people to drop it right next to a wetlands. But they probably won't want to, but we wanna make it clear that it shouldn't be there, so.
So we can see if we can fix, add a little guardrail, yeah.
The next one is four four, um, page ten, and it.
Yes, sorry, it was minencing.
It basically kicks the authority to review to the agent.
This is, um, this was a thing. That was, we, this was a big bugaboo when we last updated the wetlands regs, it's incorrect, and it should be consistent with. It it should not say that, it should be only the agency has the jurisdiction over what is permitted or not.
Yep. Um, okay. So the next one, seven two, um, is. It said, um, if an application of the planning zoning commission for a site plan or a special permit approval. Or subdivision involves land containing a wetland, so, um. Basically, the comment here is that. If it's, if someone has a site plan application, and there's a hundred acre site, and there's wetland. Nowhere near the development, just because it's on the same site does not mean then you wanna do the referrals. Um, so we would wanna just tweak that to make it clear that if it meets the criteria of of a regulated activity, then it goes to the commission.
Yeah.
Cool. Um, and then the first one was just updating the website URL. The next is seven four, which was a little bit further on that page, and that is. Um, to support something that is included later, which is basically. If you run into a situation where you have somebody that's submitting an application, and you don't need all of the stuff that you ask for, you know. Um, site plans and engineering studies and proclamations, et cetera. Um, it it provides coverage that if you don't, if they don't submit it and you approve. You're covered, because in this case, if it's clearly not required for you to evaluate the application, then it's okay if it's not been submitted. It's up to you to make that determination, but I would. There, I'm sure there's been circumstances with applications previously where they haven't submitted certain things, and no one's needed it, and it, we're all good, but. You wanna make it clear that it's in the regs so that it's not arbitrary.
So, um, do we put, is this related to agency applications only, or is it, should we, unless the agency or it's duly authorized? Agent determines.
Um, sure, yep, we can do that.
Yeah, so I definitely have not been asking for.
Yeah, and and, right, so we just wanna, yeah.
For the deck.
Yeah, you guys don't wanna see every twelve by twelve deck in town, do you?
You used to, but.
Yeah, um, the next one is not a comment, but a red line, it's seven nine, and it basically just. Takes away the, doing the math on the the expiration dates and and just says. That the permit should not be valid for a period of time which would exceed the timeframes in the Connecticut general statutes. Um, we've had all kinds of changes in all different legislative sessions, and God knows what next year will bring, so. The the, in my mind, the best thing to do is point right back to statute. They go right to that section, and they can figure out based upon all those criteria what it is, and then you know that forever your regs align with what those current. Thoughts are.
And they can figure that out, all the more power to them.
Yeah, I. That's pretty straightforward, next one, eight point four. Um, so this one says that basically you're gonna require notices to abutting property owners, seems to say all the time. Um, do you notify abutters for everything?
Just for agency, all agency applications, not for the duly authorized. You know, the the agent approvals.
So, so every application to the commission requires abutters, but only. The ones with a significant impact then gives those abutters a mechanism to speak?
Hearing, can they speak?
So do you guys end up with a conflict where they get notice that says, hey, this application is happening, and they show up to the meeting and are told they can't speak?
So we, so we notify them that an application is being filed. And then, if, usually, if there's really anyone that shows up and wants to speak. Um, then they'll, the agency will have a public hearing, that's how it was under my tenure. Um, cause it would be in the, they have a public hearing under the, that it's in the public interest. So they would. Yeah, so I, and how do other towns do this?
I don't, I'm trying to think of, if I know anybody else that does.
If it's a significant impact, they put that on record. A- as they're receiving the application, and then they schedule a public hearing, so that should always, whenever you're receiving an application. And you're scheduling a public hearing, you document. The the, only when there's a public hearing are you notifying the the abutting property owners, is that correct? In most other towns?
Yes.
Yeah, I I am, yeah, I, to me, the, I guess what I'm trying to. It's, it's like the chicken and the egg, because the application gets submitted, the commission does the review, if they determine it's significant, then they have the public hearing. But if they determine it's in the public interest. They have, will have already scheduled the public hearing before the abutters. It it's not, I don't think there's, it's on its face, I don't think there's any, any issues, um, I just, the way it was written, I was like. Uh, just that we were just a little bit confused, um.
I I think that I'd like that to be consistent with what other towns, just from a staff administration is. I mean, generally now, we are only having. But they're notifying them upon filing that application, so they don't really know when the public hearing is, unlike a special permit.
And they could, it could be a situation where we don't have a public hearing.
And then you've just notified people that this is happening, which isn't necessarily bad, but if they wanna speak against it, they have no recourse to do so. If you, in your authority, find it to not be significant or in the public interest.
Can they, they can send a letter.
They absolutely can, there's nothing that stops them from doing that, but.
How, what was, what's your suggestion, Mike, here?
Um, that the applicant be required to notify abutting property owners not less than. Ten days prior to the opening of the public hearing.
Okay, this is just like in the special permit, that let's, that's my vote to you guys, obviously.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So I I think that, you know, you wanna keep it on the applicant, the burden on the applicant, but I I have run into this. Particularly with timber harvest applications, because it's the same thing, they're, they're notified by the applicant that they're conducting this activity, they show up to the meeting, and they wanna know. What's going on, and they wanna talk, and the commission says, I'm sorry, this is not a public hearing, like, but I got a letter. That your regs required them to send me, and now I'm here to just listen, and so it just creates this rub. But I think letting them know there will be a public hearing, and when it is, is is a far better. Way to engage the na- the, you know, abutting neighbors anyway.
Right in the abutting letter.
Right.
They're being notified, and they're being notified of the date and time, and say, all at the same time.
Yeah, that, and that is, makes it consistent across zoning and. Wetlands, which it has not been, it's always kinda weird, yeah.
That make sense to everyone?
Alright, let's scroll some more, um. Section ten, I think, unless, yep, um. So this is the same type of comment as, as we've talked about with the subdivision. It's, you know, it's always appropriate for staff to provide comments, but allowing other agencies, including the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's not, these are not all public hearings, um, and so having the Planning and Zoning Commission comment. On an application before the inland's commission, when it's the same group of people, and ultimately, the application may go to them formally. That, that is weird, um. You know, so, a lot of these things, again, you know, you are certainly, things are are less sign. Not scientific, but they're uh, less tangible in your review. With this as than than subdivision, because it's not, here's the design criteria for how you regulate, we're gonna regulate wetland impact, but. Um, we don't wanna just open it up to have, um. You know, effectively, like the Conservation Commission, I mean, they're members of the public, they're about, they're an organization, but they don't have any regulatory authority. Um, and so we wanna be careful that we're not creating a conduit for sort of a quasi-public hearing. Where people storm the Conservation Commission, and you end up with a letter from the Conservation Commission into a public hearing or non-public hearing item. So I I think you get it.
Uh, but all wetlands applications are are, um, referred out to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, and I think we, I'm not sure if we flagged that or not, I I wanna verify that that. Again, I I, we don't do that in any other place that I work with the regs, or I'm not. I wanna, I wanna double check that we can still do all of those things.
That's been, you know, if 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 we do not refer things out to the Conservation Commission. That's fine, if this, that's what this agency wants to do, however, it's a very, very significant change. And I do think you rely on their comments, so, and that's just been practiced since, um. You know, the, when the Wetlands Act was passed, that's how it's always been here, so, doesn't mean we can't change that, it's just gonna be a very significant change.
And I, I don't think we necessarily need to take them out of it unless statute says we have to.
Okay. No, I do not see. Uh, that they need to be part of that.
Yeah, so that's just, we need to confirm that through all of this, what can, what referrals can's. Can be included and and then remove the the ones that can't, but I don't think, I I don't think we're suggesting that we simply just remove them just because.
Yeah, okay.
The next one is eleven point seven, again, just aligning it with statute. Nothing, nothing else there, um. From the, the next one is page twenty-four, fifteen point nine. This is just a note. Um, it says the agency shall act upon changes requested within thirty-five days after completion of the hearing. Um, so the statutes are, don't have a specific deadline for the agency to decide in these applications. A lot of places you'll see sixty-five days because that's the fallback based upon what we see everywhere else. There's nothing wrong with thirty-five. Totally fine, you're acting more quickly. I think that's better. Um, but it was just a note.
So we can make it uh sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty-five?
Only for map revisions. This is a, this is referencing to amend either the inland wetlands regulations or the inland water courses map. The reason why it's sixty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five for uh wetlands, like, applications normally is so that way if you have simultaneous submissions. But it happens before, at least that's.
And that's by state statute.
Right, but this is not that. So you're saying we could give more time for this because it doesn't have to give consideration to planning and zoning?
Yeah, it it, because this would be just for a, if it's a um, an amendment to the reg or 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 the map on the wetland side, it it's just pointing out that statute doesn't define how long you have. It's completely silent. It's been, you can see it in statute, in a bunch of case law updates, in both Ziska books. It's just missing. Um, so certainly you wouldn't want to do any, do it, do something that's more than third, than sixty-five. Because I think that's, that's the longest, but it was just a note to let you know that there's not a specific statutory obligation that's tied to that.
So now I just, I have to raise the point of, so hypothetically, not saying that anyone would ever want to do this, but if an agency decided it never wanted to amend its regulations, could it amend its regulations to say that it had to act on the change within, I don't know, a hundred years and then keep tabling the item on its agenda with the way it's, it's not.
Well, we're not gonna do that.
No, we're not gonna do that. I find it very funny.
I think you'd end up with a, with a due process lawsuit, but yeah.
In my opinion, is keep it um consistent with how we uh act on wetlands.
I think that makes sense, so that way the staff doesn't get it confused. It's like everything is thirty-five days.
Okay. Let's keep it scrolling.
Sorry, it's just out of my head. Like, could we just make it as long as we want?
You can, you can ponder those things after hours or on weekends.
That's fair, you're sorry.
The next one is twenty-seven and twenty-eight and it's just basic, it's just noting that those, all those links, at least for me, did not work. It may be a firewall, but they're all dead. Um, so well, they they need to be fixed.
Yeah, that, that's almost not, does that, it does not really belong in the
This is the appendix?
Yeah.
It's activities regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers.
It, it's a resource. Uh, if if we can easily swap the links out, I don't think it's a huge issue. If we can't, we can, we can remove them. But um, and yeah, and the next one was on twenty-eight, basically saying that a lot of the stuff in here, which adds many pages uh, don't pertain to wetlands. These are just, this is just a copy of eight dash seven D, which applies to everything and we can, we can strip out some of that stuff or or remove it entirely. Again, the 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 issue with citing statutes is that statutes change and regulations then have to follow, so.
Yeah, no, I think let's let's cite the statute and, you know, as I like the statute as amended, because then you're, you're always good.
Yeah, and that is, that is it. And I know that it's been a bit of a marathon and I think we have two other things on the agenda, but they'll they'll be quick. Um, so the Riparian Corridor zoning status, so basically where that is, and we met um with staff to go over uh some of the comments and the things that they had. There is some case law um that comes out of Stratford that supports or affirms a commission's right under certain circumstances to regulate um development within proximity to these areas purely as a sup- as a means to protect against flooding effectively. So what we went through some of the comments that we had from from staff as far as what they were trying to do and pull together. And we want to compare to we want to compare what the town is trying to do with um what is allowed based upon that. Um, if this were to go anywhere, um, it would, this type of zoning scheme would probably have to go within the flood regs, because that's what, that's what it was a- affirmed as as being supportive of. But really, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this. I know that there's been, been a lot of public following this and 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 pushing for this. We've been focusing on the inland wetlands and subdivision regs, because those need to get to general code so they can start codifying that in line with the zoning stuff. So that was our priority, but really what we want to make sure of here is that the juice is worth the squeeze. Um, we we, you've got some language on the books, you've got an upland review area, there's all these other things that that come into play and we don't want to create two additional pages of regulations, which are not going to move the needle. So um, we, we started working through that and met, met with staff to kind of talk through some of those initial comments, but we want to compare it against the Stratford case to really see if this is something that would hold up. Um, because effectively, you're going to end up with people that are going to end up with in these areas where they are completely prohibited from doing something. Based upon where their existing houses, um, I think you guys had mentioned, you can think of some off the top of your head. And if they fall within that no build zone, that's it. There's just, there's just no, no workaround. It's a, it's a strict no build area, for example, fifty foot or whatever. Um, and and that's a very hard line to take and so we want to be careful with that, so we don't end up with all kinds of issues. So I hope that's not a letdown that we haven't gotten further, but we wanted to get through the other stuff and and in looking at it more deeply, there, there are some legal things at play here and and then then potential. There are very clearly some properties that will immediately this will immediately affect them. Um, and so we wanted to slow walk it.
So I think, I, Mike and our, the sta- our staffs looked at this and discussed this with Mike. And as you know, there's been a big, and as Mike said, there's, the public is talking about this, they're kind of raring to go. But I think this is why we didn't get further back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, whenever you did it, is because, as Mike says, the juice probably isn't worth the squeeze. And in fact, you know, in in some cases, it could be a taking, or they're just going to go to the ZBA and get a variance. And then, so it's, it's just something. We have a lot of things in our regulations that are protecting our wetlands and water courses. And maybe it's a matter of articulating those things a little bit more clearly to the public so that they fully understand that, you know, if you're in a flood hazard zone, there's really hardly anything you can do. I, it's a pool shed or surface parking, right?
I think that's, that's part of it. I think one of the reasons why um it seems like there's so much activity because most of our flood zones are down at the southern end of town. And most of our big, huge controversial developments right now are at the northern end of town. So they're not falling into the same areas because of how the FEMA flood maps um are with elevation. And then the other thing that I've been thinking about this and noticing is that, you know, I think it would be worse to put regulations into place and claim a great victory, that we've done it, we've protected this space and then not have anything meaningfully changed in terms of the kinds of applications that get approved. Because that is the exact way you lose public confidence um and get people to get up on their pulpit and make a very convincing argument that you're not doing anything, you're just making it look like you're doing things.
And that's not why we're here at all.
We're here to actually improve things. Um, now, with that said, I remember at the first meeting when I introduced the um the Riparian Corridor zoning stuff to conservation, the entire Conservation Commission was floored that we had a fifty-foot area in our um planning and zoning regs that is wherever feasible, stay out of this entirely, because no one knew that we had that. So uh that advertisement is is big. Um, and uh I think it's already because the conversation was started with our land tech reviewers concerning the application at five forty-one, five fifty-five. That has fundamentally changed, I think, that project's trajectory. So I think just the the broader education of applicants and the public and our other boards is already going to have an effect. But you know, the 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 concern of, do we lock off a property that was previously worth ten million dollars because of where a stream is and they sue us for taking? Is that going to happen? Is, that's, that scares.
I, I think you're exactly right, Michael. I I completely agree with with that, with both of the Michaels, actually. I I think you're right on that. I think we, we um, we do have some strong protections and and a big part of where we can improve is making sure that people understand what they are and how they're applied. And if we can work on that and clarify that, that that's a big part of our job, rather than putting in things that may look good on paper, but in fact don't have much application in the town. That's, that's not useful. It's not a use, good use of your time.
It looks performative.
Okay. The next one is um multifamily, multifamily housing. So this one is basically, we hit pause on this because we want, we have the moratorium that's going before public hearing. Um, and so it it didn't seem prudent, given the other things we're reviewing, to start doing anything on this when we haven't had a public hearing to hear how people might think about what's currently before them. So the thought with this is to proceed forward in in starting that evaluation. Once we have a public hearing on the moratorium, we'll, we'll get feedback in theory from members of the public, which will help. Um, if they say, yeah, this is great, we we think, you know, while we do this, we should look at this or or vice versa. So that'll certainly help provide more color. Um, but also, you know, we we don't want to have a moratorium to start evaluating regs, but before we, you know, that's the purpose of the moratorium. So we we just sort of, the sequence, I think, needs to line up. We were focused on these other things, so um we haven't pushed forward with that much yet. We wanted to get to the public hearing and make sure that was into effect. And I promise those two updates would be shorter, so that's where we are.
And keeping of livestock uh regulations, I think um you all are working on that and Jolene is, you're not, you're not quite there yet, right?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's accurate. Is that correct, Craig? We, we had a good meeting where we hashed out, uh, looked at a lot of different regs from different towns and and hashed out what we thought would be a decent approach and and we're just working on codifying that.
Is that your take, Craig, as well?
Exactly. Um, the animal control officer was present at our last meeting and she gave her opinion on roosters and um I think we're taking a very responsible approach to protect um homeowners on smaller lots and to keep roosters out of the subdivisions and um and still providing people with a way, a recourse to file an um, an informal appeal, if you will, with a zoning agent if they feel they should be able to have a rooster. So I think we're headed in the right direction and Jolene is putting together a document for us.
Okay, next steps.
I I have one question. So the right, the Riparian Corridor, just to be clear, um you're, you're still going to look at um Stratford, right, that case? But or, yeah, to see what, yeah, okay, it's a, so it's not. And then, and then we'll have to kind of come up with a synopsis of what we're going to do and and if not much, then why? I think that's just part of, we want to just let people know, we're not trying to avoid this. We're just trying to.
One other thing we discussed during our meeting with um with Tygie on that was whether or not certain water courses in town can be denoted to be particularly specific and those preserved for values enumerated in the P O C D beyond just the flood protection. Uh, you know, the the preservation of certain rivers can be seen as high value because those rivers and their immediate tributaries do certain things and functions which are preserved by by planning. Um, and I think uh that may be something else that we'll have to pursue um at our next meeting.
Would, would that be sort of analogous to a scenic roads designation? I mean, scenic isn't the appropriate word perhaps, but.
Yeah, I mean, like it's, maybe it's, what, we, we, we just had a conversation with um Mike Zito, right, or Nick Zito. The wild and scenic Wilmington River, like they, they have certain protections and maybe it's I don't know, maybe it's something.
Wellington, Mike, does, has specific rivers that it denotes and you have a larger upland review around those?
Yeah, Wi- Wellington and um Tolland have cer- create specific circumstances by which the upland review is doubled. Um, and and so we were recently ru- approached by the, the Bolton Lakes Watershed Conservation Alliance or some, some version of those words. And um they asked us to consider additional restrictions for a stand of acetic Atlantic white cedar trees, which were located in Tolland. So we, the commission went through this whole process of evaluating, what can we do? Do we, do we, do we increase the upland review area? Do we do this? Do we do that? And and based upon the existing structure of our regs, uh, it says that uh the upland review is doubled in the following circumstances, if it's a steep slope or whatever, but also if it's an area with unique characteristics and of deemed to be of special concern or habitat, whatever. I can't quote it verbatim, though I should be able to. So what we're doing is we are going to start mapping those areas. So we're going to take the white cedar stand and we're going to add it to the wetland map. So that because in talking with Darcy, uh, you have to be able to clearly define them and if it's not just a river, it's hard to know where the limits are. So we're going to, we're going to map that, add it to the official wetland map. So that's currently at deep for comment. So we'll see what they, what they say.
That's cool. Can, can I ask one more favor? Can you send me the citation to the the Stratford case that you cited?
Uh, the, you want to just to cite, I can send you the
Oh, yeah, sure, great. Yeah, whatever you've got. I, I can look it up, but whatever you've got would be great, thanks.
We, we have the Westlaw summary. Well, I don't know if I have your email, but I think Michael has the summary as well.
Forward you the Westlaw summary, Lance.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so when's our next meeting?
Um, August eighth at two
Because you won't get enough bus on August seventh. We want to call you back in.
Yeah, at two P M.
The next day.
Are those Tuesdays?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're normally every month, once a month on Tuesday.
Yeah, the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Yep. And I still haven't been added to the town gown list, so I never know when they are and so, um, but I have one more to add me.
Okay. Good, I think we're done. At, time is it, four forty-nine P M.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Good night, doll.
Good night, is it that late?
It was supposed to rain, it didn't rain.
But could you, uh?
Yes, I will end the meeting at four forty-nine. I will stop sharing and I will.
Thank you.